Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for today, Wednesday, May 28, 2008. Welcome to the John Farrow Council chambers. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday in room 340 of City Hall. We meet one day a month in Van Nuys City Hall, but otherwise, we are here downtown. We want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live through the city's cable system. We're also rebroadcast each evening, and to all of those folks who are here in council chambers as well, we welcome you to City Council. We're also available online at lacity.org, where you can watch us live through the internet on webcasts, and also access any of the archives of our past meetings also online, where there's a wealth of information about city services, your elected officials, and other ways to improve the quality of your life in the neighborhoods where you live. We're also available through your telephone using Council Phone, which is the number 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY, where you can listen in on any of our council meetings or any of the committee meetings that we hold as well. We are presently awaiting a quorum. Two-thirds of our body, or 10 members, constitutes a quorum. I want to thank the members that are here so far: Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Zine. We're expecting Mr. Alakon to come down, if he can please join us. Councilwoman Han, Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Labanj, and Councilmember Rosendahl and Mr. Wesson are outside and on their way in. So if Mr. Alakon could please make his way down. Our agendas are available 72 hours in advance, online, in council chambers, or through the city clerk's office. Those detail the items that we will be discussing in our council meeting. Special items are posted 24 hours in advance. If you look through the agenda, they're split into items that have already received a public hearing in committee, and those for which a public hearing has not yet been held. If you'd like to be heard on these latter items, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants at arms, and we'll make sure that your comments are heard by the council on that specific item on today's agenda. If you have general public comments that are not for an issue that is on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under our jurisdiction, we'd be happy to hear those comments as well during public comment. So again, just fill out a speaker card in the back and hand that to one of the sergeants at arms, and we'll be sure to call on you at the proper time. Again, want to thank the members of the public that are here, and we should be beginning the meeting in about two or three minutes, but again, if Mr. Alakon will please join us. Ms. Han, Mr. Weezer, if you'll please...oh, sorry, he's excused to arrive at 11:15. But so, Mr. Alakon, Ms. Han, Mr. Labanj, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin the meeting. Ms. Gruel and Mr. Parks are excused today, and Mr. Weezer is excused to arrive at 11:15. So as soon as we have that quorum, we will begin. Thank you all for your patience. Thank you, Councilmembers Alakon, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Weiss, and Zine. And Mr. Labanj as well, thank you. He is turning himself in to the city clerk as we speak. So we're just awaiting Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Han, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Wesson. As soon as we have two more members, we will begin the meeting. So sit tight. Thank you, Councilmembers Alakon, Labanj, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine. We are waiting Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Han, and Mr. Wesson. If one of them will please join us as soon as possible, we'll begin the meeting. Thank you. Councilmembers, while we are awaiting our last member to begin a quorum, I wanted to make an introduction of some special guests that we have here. I hope you'll join me in welcoming Mr. Tigran Barsekian, Dean of the School of Architecture, and Dr. Nune Chilengarian, the head professor in the School of Urban Planning of the Yerevan Polytechnic Institute. As Mr. Labanj knows, our sister city in Yerevan, where we have gone to form one of our newest sister-city relationships between Los Angeles here. The two of them are visiting from May 28 to the 30th to study the latest architectural and technological developments in the city of Los Angeles. And community leader Kirkan Alakanian organized this visit with the assistance of Richard Lee from the Department of Public Works. Their goal is to provide them with ample ideas and information to further improve their institution when they return to Armenia, and we're indebted to you, Mr. Alakan, for doing that. Polytechnic Institute is the only school of architecture in Yerevan. They'll be visiting USC, UC Berkeley, UCLA School of Architecture, and meet and greet with their counterparts. And they're getting briefings from the city's planning, building, and safety, and transportation departments, as well as from the Bureau of Engineering, visiting the Public Works sanitation bureau, Hyperion Treatment Plant, and the D.C. Tillman Water Reclamation Plant as well. They are greeted earlier in the Board of Public Works Commission meeting today, and today, we'd like to welcome them in chambers. Please give them a round of applause from our sister city in Yerevan. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. Mr. Labanj?
[speaking Spanish]
Let me read the translation. Honorable Council President Garcetti and councilmembers, we appreciate this opportunity to visit major infrastructure facilities of our sister city, city of Los Angeles. We look at the city of Los Angeles as a beacon of light. Since so many new innovations come from here, we hope to return armed with new knowledge and information to pass it on to the young generation of architects and engineers in Armenia. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, and we very much appreciate your presence here, and we hope it is a fruitful visit. We look forward to sending a delegation to Yerevan as soon as well.
[inaudible]
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Labanj. With that, we have our quorum. If we'll please call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labanj, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Reyes seconds without objection. We'll move those minutes. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Alakon moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds without objection. Those two will be approved.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, items 1 through 3 are street lighting districts, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to June 18.
Okay, without objection, colleagues, on the street lighting ordinances, 1 through 3, we will open the public hearing and continue those till June 18. Next items, please.
Next items are also public hearing items 4 and 5, and I believe 4 has a card, and I believe Mr. Labanj has a request on item number 5.
Okay, we'll call 4 special for a card from the public. Mr. Labanj on 5?
Even file it.
Okay, we have a motion to receive and file without objection on number 5. If nobody else wishes to be heard, we'll open and close the public hearing on 5. And if we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is received and filed. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 6 through 21. Reports have been submitted on 20 and 21, and also on item number 8, a communication from the Chair of Personnel.
Okay, why don't we hold the ordinances on the desk? I do think we will have 12 members momentarily. And any specials, Mr. Zine?
Eight.
Eight for Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes?
No, we're fine.
You're okay? All right. So no specials, no other specials, colleagues? Please then open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. We held the ordinances on the desk. If we can go to the next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 22 through 41. 10 votes are required for consideration, and you have ordinances 23 through 26.
Okay, let's hold those on the desk.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Labanj.
Can I call number 24 special for Mr. Weiss? 24 special for Mr. Weiss?
Surely. And we also have cards on 24. We're calling those special anyway, but we also have cards on 22. We have cards on 29, on 32, on 34, on 35, on 37. And any other specials?
33.
33 for...
And if we can continue item 41 until Friday?
Okay, Friday would be the 30th. Without objection, we'll continue that. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Cardenas? Nope, 32, okay. And Mr. Zine, did you have a special? Okay, all right. If we can take up the balance, please, of the items. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Which one, sorry?
39.
39 forthwith without objection. Got it. Thank you very much. Mr. Labanj, next item, please.
Next item is on the continuation agenda. Item number 42 is the mayor's veto message.
Okay, we have to receive and file that. Anybody want to call this a special? We can.
On number 42, a request from the Budget and Finance Chair, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Gruel to send us back to committee.
Okay. I thought it was to receive and file.
Return this 42.
Okay, okay.
The funding portion.
Okay, the funding portion of it, okay. Let's hold that on the desk for a moment. Call that special. And that runs us through the agenda, I believe. We have Mr. Wesson here, and Ms. Han, I know is expected shortly, so we can take up the ordinances as soon as she arrives. In the meantime, we'll go to a general public comment. Yeah, and just before that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes for a quick introduction.
Thank you, Council President. I thank you for this opportunity. I want to recognize Mr. Joe Hardy and the LA Voice Advocates for Housing. I'd like to please stand. They've come to the City Hall to advocate for housing that's affordable to everyone in every economic spectrum. So thank you for taking the time and joining us here in City Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And with that, we'll walk our way through public comment. And we will begin with Mr. Zuma Dogg, and after that, will be Clyde Williams. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, City Council, city of Los Angeles. Everybody here joining us today, thank you for coming out. Just to repeat, not all the council members were here yesterday, but it did cause quite a stir in the blogging community, talk radio, and on the streets, when Zuma Dogg predicted the next mayor of Los Angeles will be Irvin "Magic Johnson." That's right, in case you didn't hear, from the people who brought you Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa, well, he blew it so badly, his backers will no longer support him. So I've heard that the backers of Mayor Antonio, they're pulling the plug on him and plugging it into Mayor Magic. So look for Mayor Magic to come there, and I'm very disappointed, because of somebody who has my own t-shirt, "Zuma Dogg for Mayor '09," although I think I could easily beat Mayor Antonio, Mayor Magic won't be so easy to beat, and people seem to take it seriously. And I would also like to thank everybody that I've seen in the community. I was here yesterday downtown at the council meeting. I went to the Board of Supervisors, attended some demonstrations, and talked to some people. And, you know, I appreciate everybody's kind words, and they see me on TV, radio, blog. And it is very overwhelming, and City Council should take note, because damn, I'm telling you, I walked the streets, people were running out of buildings to say hello to me, taking pictures with me. This is all just downtown yesterday, and it's about activism. It's about activism. I come out here, and I'd like to thank it. Diversity! I'd like to say the best thing in my two years of coming here in these meetings is the diversity, you know, ethnic, age, socio-economic. There's people in my lives in their 70s and 80s that I've met. Some of my best friends are from places I've never visited until I came here, and I'd like to say, although it's not easy, there has been real change. And let's just take a moment, for all the activists and all the people who have sent Zuma Dogg information and emails and phone calls and meetings, I do see signs of hope where there's been some major victories, and although it's not easy, you have to squeeze the life out of yourself. Come down here two years in a row, like in nutcase, 16 hours a day. Thank you for the spirit. It is worth it at times. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. Clyde Williams is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sacks will be after that.
Hello, my name is Clyde Williams. I'm from El Cerrano, 20-year resident of L.A. You're considering many items at this time related to the funds that we don't have and to meet our financial crisis for the next year, and perhaps the next. Today, sales and rental of city assets to be used in the general funds seems strange. During the last 20 years, the Autry National Center has used and abused their extraordinarily beneficial lease agreement for lands in the Griffith Park area, but without full compliance to the terms and conditions of their lease, and without enforcement of such terms and conditions by the Department and Board of Public Work...sorry, Board of Recreation and Parks. This total of 11 acres is provided at $1 a year, which has not been paid for 20 years, but is valued by them and others at more than $300,000 a year benefit to them. ANC has claimed funds that they do not have in their accounts, and have undertaken practices which are not acceptable to most organizations and charities, as documented in our CECL report that was provided to the Board of Recreation and Parks. Further, review of available ANC documents show that broken promises in their agreements with other organizations and distortions by their accountants and those that know better have led to a complaint being filed with the California Board of Accountancy, also provided to the Rexon Park Board, regarding the ANC practices and the cover-up by ANC and their supporters. Perhaps we have our own little Enron right here in L.A. In this time of funding crisis, all groups should join and contribute to their fair share of the financial burden, including the ANC. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. After that, we'll go out to Van Nuys, and Rick Nightingale will be our next speaker.
Good morning, Councilmembers Arnold Sacks. Thank you very much. I'd like to address the council about the article that appeared in the LA Times on Saturday, May 24th, "Past Roles for DWP Executives Draw Fire." And I'm just going to highlight a few things. According to the committee chair, I feel I got played because we didn't understand the context of these contracts. Further on, it says that the head of the department, David Nahai, said that they built a wall, a Chinese wall around Raj to insulate him from potential conflicts, and not to take advantage of the suffering that's occurred in China, but we've seen some China walls that have fallen into dirt and dust. And also, I'd like to talk that the DWP Commission President said he had no information about Raj's former clients or efforts to isolate him from them. But basically, I'd like to talk about being played. Council members got played. What a shame. What about when the public gets played? Today, there's an item. You're going to call for division of 1B prop funds, and yet, how do they get funded? Are you going to fund the Expo Mid-City Line project? But that's the same as the Wilshire Corridor Line project. Are you going to fund the Foothill Transportation Construction Authority, or are you going to fund the Pasadena Gold Line Construction Authority? Wait, they cover the same distance. Talk about being played. You make up these myths, and you pound them into the public's head, and then when the myth becomes large enough, you go with the myth. But the reality is, you're just stealing money. That's the reality. You're creating these fake accounts. You're putting money into them. You're calling that we don't have money, we don't need this, we don't have that, and yet, there's all these false accounts, and everybody just says, what are you talking...they don't even say anything. They don't acknowledge it. Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker out in Van Nuys, and then Miriam Fogler will follow him. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. This is kind of the rule of the land. Regarding...we have laws of the land, and it seems like not everybody wants to obey them, including the city council and everything else, like regarding the marijuana clinics and so forth. Look at how many people just in the paper again, another, I hate to say police officer, but that's how they highlight it. A police officer got killed because somebody was smoking grass, and they turned around, and he got killed after they left the premises. And regarding the...pardon me. Like ICE, they condemn them. They condemn the DEA. They're just doing their jobs. They're doing the law. It's a federal law, and the city shouldn't have anything to say if they It's a federal law, and, uh, the city shouldn't have anything to say if they do the law. The city is supposed to obey the law, what the law has, if it's state, government, or otherwise. But they don't want to enforce it. They condemn these people that, I'm sorry to say, I'm one of them that wants to enforce that law. I... I lost my best friend regarding marijuana because he wanted, after he got back from the serve in Vietnam, he wanted to get loaded all the time, and I wouldn't associate with him. I lost him. But what about everybody else? They think it's all right. It's just like drinking years ago. Look at all the kids that are drinking and then taking drugs and everything else. I realize that people that have cancer turn it around, they need something, but it don't need to be marijuana. They got so many other drugs on the market. It's just an excuse to turn around and not face society and anything else that they have problems. Everybody has problems. I mean, there's not a person that gets up in the morning that don't have a problem between paying rent or whatever, putting food on the table. But they gotta say, oh, I gotta get loaded because I just can't handle it all. We all went to school. We all have problems. I don't understand it why they... why you think everybody should have to have this marijuana thing and other drugs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler. After that, we'll come back here, and Maria Peña will be our next speaker here in council chambers.
Good morning to all. And Zumadog, I wanted to let you know that we need to really be on...
Excuse me, she should be directing her comments to the council as a whole and not to members of the public.
Okay, how about all the public too? Okay, what I'm just saying here, folks, is that, uh, the point is, I'm going to make here is that we have a problem is that since the gas prices are going up, since you can control rent control, and, and Rick Nightingale gave me a good idea, we should put a cap on it. Then maybe then all the salaries and everything wouldn't be going up here, especially the City Council and big management, because when they get it in July 1st, they get a big pay raise, and no scrutiny on that. I mean, Zima can't, uh, fight, uh, fight over spilled milk. There's nothing you can do about the low end of the totem pole. Those people don't make much. You're talking about people big, the big brass here, and, uh, even Tony Cottinese came in my house and told me, oh, we made 20% the last two years. I can't believe my salary went up from 120,000 a year to 180, almost 160,000 a year. So, you can't fight over spilled milk. You gotta go after the big sharks. There is no doubt about it, folks. And, uh, you know, if you want people to work and, and to pass the civil service and make, try to keep government working, even though we've got corruption here at City Hall, and I mean corruption, we need the money, the money to keep fighting these, these big sharks here, big guns here at the, uh, City Hall. You gotta have money, mola, to keep going, to make a living. You know, I got a kid to put through. But they... they have no scrutiny on their salaries under Prop H. Let's do something about that. I know about the mayor knew about the, the budget prices. I've known about it for the last 25, 30 years. So, that's nothing new to me. These people just let it slide, let it go, and I'm for Prop... I'm for AB 12, 212.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll come back here to council chambers. Our next speaker is Maria Peña. While that's happening, if we could take up the ordinances we held for 12 members? Hold on one second, Ms. Peña. We're just going to take a quick vote, but stay there. And if we can open the roll?
Uh, Mr. President, that's, uh, she needs to select them, and that would be items six, seven...
Six and seven.
Nine, 23, 25, and 26.
Correct. We can go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. These were the ordinances we held on the desk, um, for 12 members. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, got you. So, uh, if we can ask everybody to please, uh, move their conversations outside or to try to make it a little bit more quieter, if we can have the sergeants-at-arms assistants there so we can hear public comment a little bit better. And if we can send 23, 25, and 26 forthwith, without objection. And lastly, move to receive and file on 42. So, we can go ahead and open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Peña, thank you for your patience.
And thank you for saying my name correctly. Um, I'm Maria Peña. I'm a member, I'm a resident of District, um, 13, and, um, I'm here representing LA Voice. We are coalition of faith-based, um, organizations throughout the city of Los Angeles. And with me, I have clergy and just people from the community who are here to talk about the housing crisis that we're experiencing here in the city of Los Angeles. And I want to thank the Honorable Council President for meeting with us, um, last July on this very issue. And also like to thank, um, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Wesson, Councilmember Gruel, and others who have supported us, and the mayor who met with us in October to talk about the housing crisis. So, what we'd like to do today is just share a little bit with you about how the housing crisis is affecting people, our communities, our congregations, and why we have these, these issues that are affecting our lives. And we just want to be productive residents, but we're worried about the housing crisis. We're coming to you as, um, as leaders of our city and the bright minds of our city to really take the leadership on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Maria. Sister Karen Collier is next, and after that will be Reverend Ryan Bell. Good morning, Sister.
Good morning. My name is Sister Karen Collier. I'm the parish life director at St. Agatha's Church, which is at Mid-City, La Brea and Adams, in Councilman Wesson's district. What I'd like to do is to just read, uh, something that we have that we would like to give to Councilman Wesson. On December 9th, 2007, you pledged before 400 community members of LA Voice your commitment to working with your council colleagues to pass a strong citywide mixed-income housing ordinance. To date, we are still waiting for language to be introduced in council. We will call upon you to use your leadership to make this ordinance a reality. Working families in Los Angeles can't wait. We would like to give these, um, petitions to Councilman Wesson.
Okay, if we can ask one of the sergeants-at-arms to, uh, to help us out, if one of the sergeants-at-arms can take those petitions, please, from the speaker?
Please.
Thank you.
I'd like to give these to Councilman Wesson.
Thank you very much. Reverend Ryan Bell is our next speaker. After that will be Father Jim Mott. Good morning.
Good morning, council. Thank you for taking the time to hear us. My name is, uh, Reverend Ryan Bell. I'm the senior pastor of the Seventh Adventist Church in Hollywood, and, uh, it's a privilege to be here today with my colleagues and community leaders from LA Voice. Uh, we're here today basically to urge council to courageously embrace a mixed-income housing ordinance for our city. As our city grows and develops, gentrification, um, squeezes out our, uh, some of our most vulnerable members of our community. Um, this squeeze, this economic squeeze that happens, uh, really fractures our communities. It fractures our congregations. As people end up commuting from far away for their jobs, it increases pollution. It increases, um, the stress on people's families as they have to find time to be with their children after long commutes to far distances so that they can afford to live. When you go to your synagogue, to your mosque, to your church, you don't ask, as you sit down in the pew, how much the person next to you makes. And yet, somehow, our communities have developed along those lines, where only people of a certain economic means can live in a particular place, and others are forced to drive from distance. We believe that our communities should be a safe place and a welcoming place for all of our citizens. We believe that a mixed-income housing ordinance smartly put together for the whole city will ensure that the future of our most vulnerable citizens is protected. The city is going to inevitably gentrify. And in some ways, this is a good thing, as our communities develop and grow and become more safe and accessible to all the needs of our citizens. But as that happens, we must protect the people who have lived there and been faithful to those communities for generations. If the people who have endured through the most difficult times of our communities and our neighborhoods are not able to live there after the things improve, after they have been the ones to fight for the improvement of their neighborhoods, then, then what do we have left? So, thank you for hearing this, and, and I know this is a difficult time for the budget, and I know that you have many considerations. Um, but recognize that as you have a difficult time with the budget, our neighbors and our church members are also having a difficult time, and they're the ones that are bearing the brunt of this economic downturn. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Father Jim Mott is our next speaker, and after that is Rabbi Jonathan Bernhard. Good morning.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Honorable councilmembers, as parish priest of the Catholic community in the east end of Hollywood Boulevard and the area north of it called Los Feliz, I am blessed with a large number of mixed-income families, some very wealthy, some very poor. The families at the lower end of the financial scale are being forced out of their residences where they have lived most of their lives due to the rising cost of rents or their apartments being turned into condos. Affordable housing for them in our neighborhood is becoming more and more scarce, as it is in many parts of Los Angeles. I was pastor of the same church in the 1980s. When I returned after 20 years this past summer, within two months, five different families came to me to tell me that they had to leave because they were being forced out against their will. These are people now elderly, either retiring or already retired on fixed incomes. They are being driven from their, the stores they know, the doctors they know, and the faith communities they've helped build. I urge you as the council members here to work together with the owners, the developers, the renters, the small businesses, the large businesses, and the faith communities. We will work with you, but can we work together to resolve this problem in a timely fashion? I thank you for your consideration. God bless.
Thank you very much, Father. Rabbi Jonathan Bernhard is our next speaker. After that is Reverend Liz Munoz.
Honorable councilmembers, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to address you on this very important issue. My name is Jonathan Jaffe Bernhard. I am the senior rabbi of Adat Ariel in North Hollywood, and our congregation, while located within Councilwoman Wendy Gruel's district, spreads out throughout the entire valley. Many of the voices that you're going to hear this morning, and you will continue to hear about this issue, that ask you to act in a compassionate manner. And certainly, the shared faith traditions of Judaism and Christianity require that in your role, you do seek and act in compassionate ways. But I also ask you to act and speak in a voice of justice. The issue of affordable housing is at root an issue of justice as well. And as a council, your obligation to the city is to be able to promote a just and fair and safe society. Affordable housing creates the kind of communities, the kind of neighborhoods, and primarily the kind of families where our children can grow, develop, and learn, and where our society itself and its values are passed on from one generation to the next. To force people to live in or not even have homes is, in a sense, to deny them and deny all of us this basic, basic necessity to our lives. Our shared faith tradition says in the Book of Deuteronomy, "Sedik, sedik ti'rdof." Justice, justice shall you pursue. And we are asking you to step forward and enable us with you to pursue that justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rabbi. Reverend Liz Munoz is next. After that is Maria Duñez.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, my name is Reverend Liz Munoz. I am the rector of Trinity Episcopal Church on Melrose in Mr. Garcetti's district. I am also proud to claim to be a native Los Angelian who is raised and still living in Boyle Heights, Councilman Weisar's district. I am here today to urge the council to support a mixed housing policy that will, among other things, ensure the diversity and growth of this city that I so love and call my home. I do this because every morning, every Sunday morning, when I celebrate our services of preaching the word and eugrist, I do so by retelling the story of the one we call the Messiah, who brought good news to the poor, Jesus Christ, who ministered to the hungry and the homeless, the sick and the captives, and called us all to do the same, to share in the great abundance of this creation. I am here because my parishioners like Chuck, who suffers from chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and is oxygen-dependent, and Ted, his roommate, a senior citizen, who faithfully pay their rent every day, every month, have been evicted from their apartments because it's more profitable to turn it into a condo. I'm here because Carmen, her husband, and three children can no longer afford the rent increases in our area and are forced to move and find a one-bedroom apartment somewhere, and I don't know where that is going to be. I'm here because as a public servant who served the city of Los Angeles as a teacher and now as a spiritual leader, cannot myself afford to buy a house here in the city I have grown up with. I'm here because these stories are much too common in our community, and I urge the City Council to support a citywide mixed-income housing policy that would preserve our rich history of diversity and ensure that the very people who keep this city humming can actually afford to live here. I'm here because I don't know about you all, but when I stand in front of those pearly gates, I don't want to explain why 170 California cities and counties have inclusionary programs, but the city of Los Angeles is not able to do that.
Thank you very much. Maria Duñez is our next speaker. After that is Pilar Kispia.
Good morning. Good morning, all of you. Thank you for having us here. Um, you've just about heard about everything, and mine is a personal story. I'm a resident of the Ford District, and I want to tell you that every day when I get out of my house and I look around, there's a new face in my neighborhood. Sunset and Franklin, I mean Sunset and Virgil, every other day, you see a new face, a new homeless. People that have addictive problems, people that cannot afford the rent. Every time I look in the back of the church, some new member is sitting there looking for shelter. I am here to tell you that you probably have heard everything, but I can tell you from my own story that there's success when we receive help. I have received success. I became homeless, working two, three jobs. I could not afford my rent. I ended up outside on that part where I see these people now. But I received help from the government. I resisted Section 8. My son became a college student. He's a very wonderful person and individual that is helping others, and he's productive. I gave away, I passed on my Section 8 voucher for other people. But now, I am afraid again. I'm frightened. Gentrification is rich in us, and it's wonderful. I love downtown. You guys have done a magnificent job. I can walk and take a cup of coffee, and it's wonderful. But now, we have many people that need your help. We need to be able to afford working, be able to afford our rent. I don't want to see any more children out on the street. I don't want to see people in my neighborhood sitting on the sidewalk with a lost view, not knowing what to do next. I urge you that you work together. This is our city. This is our state. We need affordable housing, and you have the power to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pilar Kispia. Good to see you. And after that, Guillermo Salas.
Muy buenos dias. Me van a explicar que voy a hablar en español. Gusto de verlo de nuevo. Gracias por permitirnos acá. Antes que nada quiero dar las gracias a todos nuestros líderes que nos están poniendo atención.
I want to thank all the leaders for paying attention to us.
Aunque me parece a veces un poco frustrante ver que hay personas que... como que estuviéramos hablando a las paredes, que...
Sometimes there are people that, that, um, act like they're just, we're talking to the walls.
Porque están ocupados en sus propios cosas.
Because they're occupied in their own, um, things that they need to take care of.
Yo en lo personal trabajé por algunas personas dando mi tiempo, tanto mis hijos, para que... teniendo confianza en ustedes para que pudieran ser nuestros representantes.
I have worked for people that, um, have allowed me the opportunity to believe that you are doing something for our city.
Y ahora que vengo a sus casas, que es la de ustedes, hay veces me siento mal al ver que no nos ponen atención algunos.
And sometimes I feel sad when I come to your home here now and, and realize that I'm not being paid attention to.
Pero la razón por la que estoy aquí es más que nada, uh, para expresar nuestra frustración que tenemos.
And the reason I'm here today is to express the frustration that we feel.
El no podemos sentir bien en nuestras viviendas.
And not to be able to feel well in our homes.
En, de algún modo, como que sentir de nuevo cuando aquí hace muchos años los despojaron de sus casas, de sus tierras.
To feel like, uh, the people from the past have been dislodged from their homes, from their countries.
Y ahora es como que si de nuevo nos están despojando de donde estamos viviendo.
And today we feel it's the same thing, that we're being dislodged from the homes that we live in.
Al proponer leyes o pretender que se hagan como la 98, que es la de quitar el control de rentas.
To see sometimes laws being proposed like Prop 98 that is going to take away protection of our housing.
Si para uno trabajando tres veces, teniendo tres trabajos que no cubre creo que ni la cuarta parte del sueldo de ustedes.
But sometimes we have to hold three jobs that sometimes won't give us the income for what some people in this room earn.
No podemos sostener nuestros hogares ahora con el incremento o con quitar el control de las rentas.
And now we can't take care of our homes with the increment of rents.
Esto haría que nosotros tengamos que inmigrar o irnos de aquí, de nuestra comunidad.
This would cause that we would need to leave our communities.
Y eso es lo que a mí no me gustaría. Aquí hace 20 años que inmigré, tuve mi familia, aquí tuve mis hijos, y es lo que me gustaría, continuar aquí.
And when I came here about 20 years ago, this is where I had my family, and my family has grown here, and I would like to stay here.
Y es por eso que les pido, por favor, que se, se enseñicen con nuestro sentir, con nuestra preocupación que tenemos.
And that's why I'm asking for you to listen to what we're trying to say.
Eso está. Gracias.
Thank you.
Muchísimas gracias, Pilar. Guillermo Salas is our next speaker, and then Gloria Guardia.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Guillermo Salas. Mi esposa María Isabel, mi niña. Soy padre de familia. Tengo dos hijos.
I'm a father and I have two children.
Yo vengo del área de Distrito 14, del concejal Jose Weisar.
And I'm a constituent, a council member, Weisar District 14.
Yo vivo en un single. No sé si se entienda bien qué es un single.
I'm living in a one-bedroom.
Es una casa pequeñita donde tengo que hacer todo: cocina, baño, y todo. Es lo único que está separado.
And it's a small home, kitchen, bedroom, everything is in that place.
Y como ahorita, todo está restringido con los managers de los apartamentos.
And because everything's restricted because of the managers of the apartments.
Mis hijos no tienen lugar para jugar.
My children don't have room or place to play.
Tenemos que permanecer ahí adentro.
We have to stay indoors.
Yo estoy ahorita lastimado de mi espalda. Tengo, tuve un accidente de trabajo.
I'm injured, and I have, I injured myself at work on my back.
Y es difícil para mí ahorita mantener este pago de renta que yo pago, $700 de renta.
And right now it's very difficult for me to even pay the $700 I pay for rent.
Y como no tenemos otro lugar donde ir, tenemos que conformarnos.
And because we have nowhere else to go, we have to conform to what we have.
Si yo me salgo, no podré encontrar otro lugar. Como está la renta solida tan cara, no voy a agarrar otro lugar igual.
And if I would need to move, I wouldn't be able to because I wouldn't be able to find another place where I could afford to live.
Y esa es mi preocupación. ¿Qué voy a hacer con mi familia el día que esto incremente más?
And that's my worry. What am I going to do when the rents keep going higher?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Gloria Guardia is next. And then after that, we'll hear from Reverend Carlton Roden.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Gloria Guardia.
My name is Gloria Guardia.
Soy residente del Distrito 13.
And I'm a resident of Council District 13.
Pertenezco a la Iglesia de Blessed Sacrament y a la Voz de los Ángeles.
And I'm a member, a parishioner of Blessed Sacrament and a community leader with L.A. Voice.
Estoy aquí para contarle mi experiencia.
And I'm here to share with you my experience.
Por falta de vivienda en Los Ángeles aforable, me fui a vivir a la ciudad San Bernardino.
Because of lack of affordable housing in Los Angeles, I had to go and live in San Bernardino.
Pero el trabajo y el colegio de mi niño está aquí en Los Ángeles.
But my job and my child's, my son's college is here in Los Angeles.
Pero el costo de la gasolina y el manejar todos los días fue muy duro, y debido a eso regresamos a Los Ángeles.
And the cost of gas and having to get up really early in the morning to commute to Los Angeles forced our family to relocate back to Los Angeles.
Que mi experiencia sea el reflejo de muchas familias. Nos vimos obligados a salir de Los Ángeles para buscar vivienda barata en otras ciudades.
And my story is a reflection of many other families. We fled Los Angeles looking for affordable housing.
Estoy aquí para pedirles a ustedes ayuda de vivienda aforable para todos los ciudadanos de Los Ángeles con problemas económicos.
And I'm here to ask you, beg you to think about a housing strategy, affordable housing strategy, that will benefit families of Los Angeles.
En su manos está la decisión de poder hacerlo.
And in your hands is the decision to be able to do that.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gracias. Reverend Carlton Roden, and after that is Reverend Bob Wallace.
Good morning. My name is Carlton Roden, and I'm the senior minister of the First Baptist Church of Los Angeles, which is located in Council Weston District. It's nice to see you, sir. I'd just like to encourage you to share with us in the dream and vision of having a community, one in which that includes persons of all economic diversity. Unfortunately, the community where our church sits has become more gentrified than I would like to see. Many of my members have been forced to move from the immediate neighborhood and travel back into the church, which has caused a great tension in their lives and in their homes. Overall, I'd like to encourage you to share with them in the American dream. And in that dream is the opportunity to own a home, a home, to build a foundation, and an opportunity to succeed in this country, one of which I believe a lot of my members and a lot of these persons standing around me today are being locked out of. What we really need is not for you to tell us, yes, we will support you. What we really need is for you to act. What we really need is for you, one of you, at least, to step up and have the courage to say, I'm going to take the lead on this issue despite what the political winds are blowing. We need your support and vision and leadership at this time, not to tell us yes, but to act. Los Angeles needs to be a community of diversity, not just racial and cultural diversity, but also economic diversity. So I would just, again, like to invite you to share with us and the thousands of people whom we represent to take a stand for more affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Reverend Bob Wallace is our next speaker. After that is Father Michael Mandala.
Reverend Robert Wallace, member of First Baptist Church, eighth in Westmoreland, but also representing the American Baptist Churches of Los Angeles, over 100 congregations. I'm here not only because, with you many of you, I recognize the difficulty of the housing issue and how it affects us as individuals, but because it is increasingly clear to me that this is a systemic issue. I've been a pastor for 50 years. Long ago, I learned that you could be inundated with the myriad of social problems we have, and that you have to choose what are the systemic issues which affect the whole matrix of our life. One of those is housing. Increasingly, it's clear to me that it is a systemic issue for the city of Los Angeles. Our church and our churches in Los Angeles are committed to being ecumenical, interracial, and multicultural. We are adamant in believing that it must be diverse economically. We appeal to you to give leadership as individuals and as a council, to make this a community where there is indeed a coming-together of people across economic lines. We think housing is the systemic issue. Urge you, challenge you, to bring all the people together, the need to address this. We know that there are homeowners. We know there are renters. We know there are developers. We know that the people represented here must be a part of that dialogue. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Father Michael Mandala.
I'm Father Michael Mandala. I'm pastor of Blessed Sacrament Church in Hollywood. I'm in my 10th year as pastor of the church, and Blessed Sacrament is one of the founding churches in L.A. Voice Pico. I'm very proud of L.A. Voice Pico. I'm very proud of L.A. I'm very proud that the Lakers won last night, and they're going to continue to win, right? But we have some problems in our city, and one of them is housing. On July 16, 2007, more than 1,000 people packed into Blessed Sacrament Church to decry the housing crises that we are facing in Hollywood and in Los Angeles in general. Our city is not providing for the housing needs of the city population. We believe that a well-thought-out mixed-income housing policy is a key element to meeting the city's housing need. We need housing for all, for the entire population, from the wealthy businessperson to the working poor. Our city thrives on the diversity of its population. We are all challenged, therefore, to provide shelter for this whole population. In Hollywood, I work with members of the Chamber of Commerce and the Business Improvement Districts and parishioners and clergies from various denominations, Christian and Jewish. These are good people, smart people. We can work together with city leaders to devise a plan for smart growth in our city that will serve us all. We ask you to pass a mixed-income housing initiative to take the lead in getting the housing ball rolling in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Father, and thank you to all the members of L.A. Voice who took the time to be here this morning. We appreciate you, and we appreciate your message very much. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Olga Hall is our final speaker for public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Before you leave, folks, Mr. Reyes did want to respond to the comments that were made as well. Excuse me, Ms. Hall, just one moment. I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, it feels awkward when there's some of us in this council office have been pushing hard for mixed income, for inclusionary zoning. And it's strange because I would love to see you at the committees when these discussions are occurring. When these issues arise, you have certain stakeholders that are much more active in our respective districts, and when it comes time for decision-making, we don't get the support we see here today. And so I say this with the best intentions, that we are listening. Some of us are fighting hard. It has been an uphill battle. We've made several attempts and could not get to eight votes. The powerful lobbying groups, the bankers, the real estate industry have been very...
Excuse me, Mr. Reyes. This item is not on the agenda, and...
I'm responding to participation.
It can only be a brief response.
I'm trying to get a clearance or a clarity as to why we should get more participation from folks who are here today because of the fact that it doesn't happen overnight. It has a committee process, and we need you present at the neighborhood councils, at the various homeowner associations, at all the venues in which this actual subject matter is shot down. So I appreciate your energy here. I hope in the near future, when you do see something coming forward, that you're just as aggressive, energetic, and positive as you were today. Thank you.
Thank you. For two other brief responses, Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Cardenas wanted to give brief responses.
Yes, I just want to make a further little quick comment. You know, we had Measure H on the ballot last year. The attempt was a billion dollars so we could build moderate and low-income housing. We almost got two-thirds vote. We were this shy from that. Frankly, it's a no-brainer. We need affordable housing. We need mixed housing. I will sign that pledge, but the big deal is supporting my colleague here in the process...
Excuse me, Ms. Rosendahl. I think it's getting past brief.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And Mr. Cardenas briefly?
Yes, I want to, gracias, thank you for coming. Also, don't forget, a big player in all of this, don't forget to go to the county supervisors' meeting and do public comment there, too. Okay?
Thank you all very much again. We appreciate you, and thank you, Ms. Hall, for your patience. And our final public speaker for public comment is Olga Hall. Welcome back.
Good morning.
Good morning.
After what is just been said here, it's bringing, my issue seems so small, but it still, it shows what is happening in this city, where people that have power get one more power and more power and more power, excessive power. We all have to understand that all we are human beings, and we all have dreams. And it is your responsibility to listen to us and to work for us. You have to remember that as much power as you get is going to last only a blink of an eye, because the power you have today, you won't have tomorrow. You'll be gone. We all be gone. So what do we really want to do out of this life? To serve each other the best that we can. Talking about power, as Tom Williams just stated, all the things that the Autry has done, they have their own laws, their own rules, and they are here for power. Power where it goes beyond common sense, where it steps on the rights of others, where it doesn't respect the communities, that's the kind of power. And you have to learn what they are doing. That's why I've been here, and that's why I keep coming here. At this time, we don't know if the decision for the permit for the Autry is going to be in the hands of the Recreation and Parks Department or the Referees Powers Commission. Please listen to the truth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall. That will close our general public comment. We have requests to reconsider and put back on the agenda items 10, 17, and 19. If we can open the roll on reconsideration, 10, 17, and 19, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. 10 was just for revote. Mr. Rosendahl, we're going to revote on 10. It's been reconsidered, so we're just going to vote. Do you want to speak on it or are you going to just vote? Okay, so go ahead. We're going to vote right now. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, one no.
Okay, that was a second reading. That will pass. And if we can go to the first item called special.
First item is President's item number four, and that was called special for cards.
Okay. Mr. Dogg, Zuma Dogg on item number four.
Oh, yes, this is about public convenience necessity for alcohol sales, and I'd just like to say there's been in the news a lot of alcohol versus marijuana. You had some DEA busts yesterday that they said it was under the guise that the medical, the person, you know, hit a cop, and it was very terrible in saying that it was due to medical marijuana that was found in his car. I would like to remind all people that he was drunk. The driver was drunk. Okay, so there is a difference. So here, they're doing all these busts. They're coming down hard on all the medical marijuana dispensaries. However, we allow alcohol. I'm doing, I want no on a lot of these alcohol things. There's too many of them, and I want people to be, I want to be very clear. My position is that marijuana is a much safer category than alcohol when it comes to driving. And it's a shame that the DEA is coming down on medical marijuana dispensaries over driving. Yes. Okay, overall...
If you could bring it to this one.
Thank you for bringing me back on focus. Basically, I'd like to say that, I say we need to say no to a lot of these alcohol sales because that's the real problem with driving. And when you have the council member Janice Hahn, who says they don't want LAPD going on DEA busts of medical marijuana dispensaries, I think we need to start looking at the alcohol as more of a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. That will close our public hearing on item number four. That requires a motion, I believe.
Yes, and the recommendation is on the agenda to grant the application.
Okay. Now, Mr. Weiss, you want to see that motion move forward? It's in your district, Mr. Weiss. It requires a motion on the public convenience of necessity. The recommendation is in favor. Yep. Okay. So, Mr. Weiss moves. Let's go ahead then and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Labons.
Number four, and number five earlier, based on advice that I received on a matter...
Like to reconsider?
On number five. Remember, we...
Number five, you had moved on...
You just did four, and on five, we received and filed it.
Right. You asked that...
The city attorney just alerted me to some ideas, and I want to make sure we don't miss whatever he's making.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, our recommendation is to reconsider item number five and then continue it to a date certain before July 25, and at that time, the council can...
Before July 25?
Before July 25.
I absolutely don't want to see hard liquor at this location. That's what my heart says.
Well, there have to be findings that would support that, so...
How about the councilman? I go by there. It's a shack-type place.
Well, let's go ahead and reconsider item five then. There's no objection. Let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And we'll continue that till, which date was suggested? Do you want a week from now, Mr. Labons, or two weeks?
Yeah, a week from now is fine.
All right, so one week, that'll take us to June 4 without objection.
In Los Angeles City.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labons.
Anywhere in the city.
All right, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number eight, and that was called special by Council Member Zine.
Mr. Zine, we have item number eight before us.
Mr. President, I'm still waiting on an answer on that, and hold it on the table till we get an answer on that matter.
Hold that on the desk. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 17, and that was just reconsidered and called special.
Okay, Ms. Han, item 17.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to reconsider this, just so we're very clear on our position. This is to include in our state legislative program a request to the California Transportation Committee to distribute at least 75% of Proposition 1B funds to Southern California, and that the California Air Resources Board distribute the majority of funds through the Goods Movement Emission Reduction Program to improve the air quality in Los Angeles area. This is still so key, and some of the money has been decided on how it's gonna be spent. The Air Resources Board is making decisions right now. A few facts that everyone should realize. Why is this important? Why should we get the majority of money in Southern California? Why should we get the majority of money to go towards infrastructure projects around the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach and to reduce air quality? Fact, 85% of all the containerized cargo in California ports are handled through Long Beach and L.A., America's port. Fact, the L.A.-Long Beach ports handle seven times more international cargo than ports situated in Northern California. Fact, over 880,000 jobs in California are related to the international trade conducted through Southern California ports. Fact, Southern California's road and rail system manages 75% of all the cargo exported from the state of California annually. And air, 80% of Californians who are exposed to dangerous levels of diesel emission reside in these five Southern California counties. And fact, 1,200 premature deaths have occurred to residents of Southern California because of cargo-related pollution. We move the goods in California, we move the goods for this country, and yet our infrastructure is worn out, it's well overdue to be upgraded, and unfortunately, people in and around Long Beach and Los Angeles are suffering from health effects because we move all the cargo, most of the cargo in California. And someone in Oklahoma is able to buy a flat-screen TV on time, but someone in Wilmington or San Pedro suffers as a result of the air they have to breathe on a daily basis. This is important. I think we should all be saying this message over and over again, that it's not just about our fair share. This is about, really, the majority of these funds that we overwhelmingly voted for in Southern California in Proposition 1B to come back to Southern California, particularly to the region of the Long Beach and Los Angeles port complex. I know you're gonna support this, but let's just really voice this loud and clear. This time, it's gonna make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Please, Mr. Labons has...
Thank you. I just, this class is here through the whole public hearing. Thank you. Please welcome the third graders from Temple Israel, one of the finest schools in all of Los Angeles. Please stand and be recognized, and the great teachers here. Temple Israel is where the great Big Sunday Program started, where one of the parents, David Levison, started that program. Good job, Temple Israel.
There they are.
Thank you. My mom's old shul. Thanks. Welcome, everybody, and go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl.
I don't mind being interrupted for these young kids. Good to see them. Ms. Han, you're right on the mark again. I mean, you know, this would've gone by in consent, nobody would've said anything about it. The bottom line is, we're in total gridlock from San Diego to Santa Barbara. It's a disaster here in Southern California, and this kind of money that we, the people, approve is specifically for that issue. Obviously, the port of L.A. and Long Beach is the entry point to America. You know, the goods that come through there serve the whole nation. So we need a lot of that money coming down here, and frankly, it isn't enough money. It's just the beginning of the monies we need to spend. We need to spend over $100 billion in Southern California to get our act together. I've told it to both the mayor and the governor, "Come on, guys, let's get a plan for Southern California. Let's have a 20-year plan, and every five years, let's tick off what we've accomplished." People have had it. They've reached the tipping point on the gridlock. So it's a no-brainer to support you in doing the shout-out. Thank you for your leadership on this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll on item 17. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is number 19, and that was also reconsidered and called special.
Ms. Han, item number 19.
Alex, I also wanted to reconsider this item, to just talk about it. I know you're gonna approve this. What's come before us today is 12 projects that actually require our approval, but they're 12 projects that are helping to spend the money from the China Shipping Settlement, and this was an amended stipulated judgment in 2004, and these are projects which will really reduce emissions in and around the port complex. And again, this was an agreement between the Port of Los Angeles and the community to spend a lot of money, $60 million, on air quality as well as aesthetic mitigation. So I just wanted to say that we are spending that money. A lot of people in and around the harbor area are feeling like the money that they fought so hard for was not getting spent. But we have 12 projects here today, everything from redoing engines on the Catalina Channel Express, replacing four off-road diesel engines on the Catalina Freight Line, we're retrofitting diesel engines on six forklift container movers, and we're actually repowering a main marine engine on the vessel City of Long Beach, we're repowering an engine on tugboat services. So there's a lot of things we're doing here which ultimately will clean the air up in and around the harbor area, and people will breathe easier as a result of that. This is a no-brainer, but I thought the fact that it was coming to council for approval gave me an opportunity, particularly for those people who are watching on Channel 35, to say that this money is being spent. It takes a long time to get these contracts approved, to go through the process, but when they're finally implemented, it will result in reduced diesel emission in and around the harbor area. So I want to thank the port staff for being here, and I want to thank the port staff for moving these contracts forward. We know it's a long process, but I encourage you to continue to spend this money in a quick fashion so that we can see cleaner air in around the harbor area, and I appreciate, I know it's a lot of work, but we're here to help you in any way possible, so thank you for doing this. And I just want to take the opportunity to say, clean air, it's on its way in the harbor area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item, please.
Item 22, called special for cards.
Okay, item 22 is next before us. Zuma Dogg on item 22.
Oh, yes, it seems like such a little item, but it just happens to be the budget for the year 2008, 2009. All right, please, I mean, you don't have to pay attention, but if I could at least hear myself think, I'd appreciate that, because right now, 2008, we got a massive budget crisis, as you know. First of all, I'd like to say that the accounts receivables is expecting about $1 billion. However, Zoom at Times has learned that much of that $1 billion accounts receivable is debt from the 80s that they're expecting, 80s and 90s, it's probably not gonna be coming in. Also, the county had done some reassessment of property lately and has found a 40% dip in value since last year of the property value, so there'll be much less revenue coming into the city, and with the price of, it's very distracting. Can you please hold my time?
Please continue, I'll take care of the voices, Tony.
Okay, so anyway, and the mayor, who says he didn't know about the budget, never, I can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. That is the end of public comment on that item. If you can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Fourth with without objection on that one.
Item 24, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Okay. Mr. Weiss, we have a number of cards from the public. Do you want to hold it? Okay, we'll hold that. We're working on some amendments on that, so let's go ahead and hold that on the table. And next item, please.
Item number 29, called special for cards.
Okay, we have item 29 next. And before we continue, I could just encourage people to please take their conversations outside or keep them down to a minimum. 29, we have one speaker card, Mr. Dogg? Yep? Okay. No problem. Thank you. Let's go ahead and open the roll on 29. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
32, called special for cards, and also Councilmember Cardenas.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas, we have one card, Mr. Dogg on 32. Would you like to speak? Item 32.
Yeah, I'd like the staff to come forward. I'd like to get some clarifications on the new world of cable and communications in the state of California. Basically, as they're coming up, this was a resolution to support AB 1647, Assemblyman de la Torre bill, but that bill has now, seems to be dead. But don't ever forget, at any moment in time, the legislature can resurrect a matter, get it through both houses and the governor in one day. So it's dead for now, but more importantly, let's talk about the spirit of what that legislation would do, and can you, can one of you give us a brief overview of what the nature of the new world of cable communication is in the state of California and what the previous legislation did, the Levine-Nunez bill did here in the state of California?
Good afternoon, Councilman Mark Wolf with ITA. The Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act that took effect January 1, 2007, established the California Public Utility Commission as the sole franchising authority for television in the state of California for all new video service providers, as well as permitting the incumbent operators to opt into the state franchising scheme.
Now, that sounds like gobbledygook to somebody who doesn't follow this. So where did people have to go to get a franchise before, and where do they go to get a franchise now? And a franchise, is that like a McDonald's or something? What's a franchise?
Prior to January 7, January 2007, the city was the franchising authority for any operators that wanted to come into the city and provide cable service to subscribers.
So if somebody wanted to provide cable service in Bakersfield, they would go to the city of Bakersfield, and perhaps their system was that eventually the city council would, in Bakersfield, would approve it or not. Here in Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles would deal with it policy-wise, and then the city council would approve that new franchise or that new geographic area or not, correct?
That is correct, Councilman.
That was before. Now, where do people get their franchise permit?
So now, as of January 1, 2007, the state now, under the California Public Utilities Commission, is now the franchising authority statewide for any type of video service or cable service providing.
So my second question is, if somebody had a complaint before, in the old system, before January 1, 2007, who should the person or would the person come to, and who is responsible for hearing those complaints about their cable company? And then now, who should the public go to to lodge their complaints about their cable company?
Councilman, the city prior to, or prior to the state law, the city was the sole franchising authority and would be the entity that any subscribers would go to with any customer complaints, and the city had actually adopted its own local franchise, or excuse me, local customer service standards, which were very strong compared nationwide to other municipalities. As a result of the new state law, now the city continues to be responsible to enforce and resolve cable TV complaints, but it's no longer, we're no longer able to enforce our local cable, our local customer service standards. We now have to go with the state and federal standards.
But wait a minute. If somebody comes to the city of Los Angeles and they lodge a complaint against ABC Cable Company, what can the city of Los Angeles do to tell that cable company, "Hey, service your people right. Take care of your customers. What can we do? And if we can or can't do much about it, who is supposed to be the authority now that has the ability to get the cable company's attention to make them take care of their customers?"
I'll let the city attorney's office describe in detail the process, but ITA has continued to take escalated complaints from subscribers, and in a sense, we're filling the niche of being the ombudsman between the providers and the subscribers to resolve issues. With, citizens today can call 311 to provide us with information on escalated complaints, and we work on a daily basis with the providers to try and resolve those issues.
This is Lonnie Elrich, City Attorney's Office. The city's been put in a tough position because we enforce state and federal consumer service standards, but we're not the franchising authority anymore. So all we can do under the new law, in other words, we can't pass our own standards, our standards were more stringent and somewhat more effective, in our opinion, than the state and federal standards. So all we can do is pass some very modest fines after ITA repeatedly warns and gives notice to the video providers, modest fines, starting out at $500, and the maximum possible fine for repeated violations is $7,500. So, and even the imposition of those fines can't be used to revoke their serviceability, revoke their franchise, so we have a lot less authority now.
So under the old system, if somebody was providing cable service for their customers, and they were just terrible at it, could the city of Los Angeles, under the old system, yank their ability to have a license to do business in the city of Los Angeles?
Ultimately, yes, we could have.
So that's kind of like ultimately the deterrent for people to treat their customers better if they got a lot of complaints, and the city of Los Angeles was demanding that they do a better job. The backdrop of that is they would lose their ability to do business in this city, correct?
That's correct. One would assume they would be more responsive.
And today, can we do that to the service provider, as in the cable company or the telephone company who's providing that service, that video service? Can we yank their license?
No, we cannot.
We can't do that anymore. The city of Los Angeles could do it in the past, but we can't do that anymore.
That's correct, Councilman.
Who has the responsibility of doing that now, if it ever comes to the point where they're so bad that they can get their license yanked?
Be the California Public Utilities Commission.
The California Public Utilities Commission? They have an office here in City Hall?
I don't believe so.
No, the answer to that is no, absolutely not. The PUC does not have an office here in City Hall. Do they have an office over at the county supervisors' office down the street? The answer is no, they don't. Where is their office? Where do they reside in order to deal with this issue?
San Francisco, sir.
What's that?
San Francisco.
San Francisco. Not New York City, not Los Angeles, San Francisco. So our constituents basically have to get the ear of this body in San Francisco in order for them to do something about what's going on in their neighborhood in Los Angeles, correct?
Ultimately.
Okay. The reason why I wanted to have this dialogue with you, ladies and gentlemen, is because the city of Los Angeles, along with every city in the state of California, unfortunately is in the position of not being able to help their constituents and make sure that they're getting the service that they are paying for and the service that they deserve. In my opinion, we had a much better system before, not perfect, but much better than it is today, as far as providing service to the customer, which is our constituent. And that's why I think it's important, even though AB 1647, the de la Torre bill, is now dead until it may or may not get resurrected, I think the city of Los Angeles needs to pay heed to the fact that we do need good legislation to happen in Sacramento to clarify this and to help the customers of California, to help the customers of Los Angeles, and that we have a good team of people who are ready and willing to watch that and help make sure that there's good legislation. But it's up to Sacramento, a legislator has to take up the mantle, a senator or an assembly member, in order to correct the things that are, in my opinion, askew here in California and that is hindering our ability to make sure that our constituents, the customers, are actually getting the service that they deserve. So thank you very much for all of your hard work, and hopefully we'll have a bill to follow and put a resolution of support to in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Cardenas for his thoroughness, and again, bringing it into the light for everybody to see it, literally the light of the television cameras so people out there on cable land can see it. You know, I started in this town in 1981 as a cable guy, and I worked on franchising, where we went before every city to get our customer service standards, our public access. The whole thing was usurped by the state. It was one of these quick deals, and so the phone... It was one of these quick deals, and so the phone companies could jump into the cable business and not have to go through the process of franchising in the cities. It would take a lot of time. But they did not put in the perfect mechanism for customer complaints that they should do. And frankly, they destroyed public access. 1% is a nickel compared to the monies that I used to spend on staff and the public access studios, because I truly believe it's the electronic soapbox in the 21st century. So be it as it may, we do need legislation in Sacramento with more teeth in it. So when a customer gets a fuzzy picture or they have some other problems with their cable, they know how to deal with it. The legislation is essential going forward. Before you know it, you know, the state will be co-opted by the feds, and then there'll be a federal blanket policy, which is the direction the multimedia agencies are going in. So thank you, Tony, for bringing the issue to the public's attention. And viewers out there, it's not going to be as easy in the future as it was in the past of dealing with your local cable operator. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 33, call special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Councilmember Alarcon, on item 33, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I didn't realize it was.
All right.
This is simply a resolution to, if you recall, I recognized the work of Eric Estrada and an organization in Virginia that had implemented a, an internet safety education program into the state of Virginia. And I have introduced this resolution to begin the process of, of providing legislation in the state of California that would essentially provide for internet safety education within our curriculum at the state level. And by the way, I want to mention to my colleagues who, who have not been in the legislature, any change to the curriculum is a major endeavor for perhaps some obvious reasons, but I think this is something that is, is necessary for us to promote. There is legislation, AB 88 by Ted Lieu, that makes internet safety resources available online to the Department of Education. But in addition to supporting that measure, I would like us to support LAUSD adding internet safety education to their curriculum. We want to formalize that in a resolution. And also to support statewide legislation to require internet safety education for our children. As I said when I made the presentation, that allowing your children to use the internet unsupervised is like putting their hand in the hand of a predator. And more and more chat rooms are existing, and we're finding that predators are attracted to those sites and use them to attract their victims. And so, at some point, I know that this state is going to have to deal with this issue. I'm very thankful that Ted Lieu has taken this battle cry. I did have the opportunity to sit down with Karen Bass and, Karen Bass, and ask her to support this as a priority. And I'm hopeful that we will see even stronger legislation emerge as a result. So this is simply a resolution to put the council on record as supporting a curriculum that educates our kids on internet safety so that they will avoid any tragedies or inappropriate behavior on the internet. And, and Mr. Labange, in fact, was, was at the press conference with me, with Eric Estrada and the internet, what was the name of that organization, the Surf, Safe Surf organization, I'm sorry, at St. Charles Elementary School, which has implemented the program as part of their curriculum. So I urge your support, and hopefully we will make our children safer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I want to thank former Senator Richard Alarcon, now Councilman, who understands the legislative process. But more importantly, I want to thank him for paying attention to this legislation and bringing it to the attention of the city of Los Angeles. As you're, everybody is well aware, the internet is much, much more prolific today than it was yesterday, and it's going to continue to grow. Unfortunately, there are predators who actually have been able to access children through the internet, and I think it's important that this captive audience of students throughout the state of California be protected as much as possible to make it harder and harder for predators to access these young children. So I think it's important that the city of Los Angeles follow through with supporting this resolution and also follow through with helping in any way to make the legislation better every single day. And as Councilmember Alarcon just said, hopefully through the Speaker's, Karen Bass's support, not only this legislation will come to fruition and become law, but also will get future legislation as well, because this is an ever-changing, evolving problem, and I think we need to do everything that we can to stay several steps ahead of these predators and make sure we make it as hard as possible for them to access our children of California. Once again, thank you, Councilman Alarcon.
All right, that's our last speaker on the queue. If we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote on item 33.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 34, call special for cards.
Okay, our first card is out in Van Nuys, Miriam Fogler, on item 34.
When are these fee waivers going to stop? You know, we're spending money and the animal services can't even get their, get themselves together and hard time getting money raised for that department. So why are you using the, the public's money to pay for these special interests?
Just as a point of clarification, this one is reimbursed, this one.
I'm talking about 34, there's a lot of them on here. There's a lot of, a lot of different ones here, and I can just tell you what there is on the list, I can't find it. Anyway, there's a lot of different ones here, unfortunately Sharon Brewer didn't come. She always adds up the whole thing. But it always comes to the point is that the cities always have to find some way to cut back on everything else, but when it comes to the public, that's what's, we're suffering the most for all these fee waivers that you're giving here, and it's not right. So, you know, that's why you've got AB 212 on your, over your heads, because you people just don't know what you're doing down here at City Hall, because you just give away your money like, like it comes off the press. Just no, no regards about the public at all and the public's interest, only for your interest to be reelected. And I hope that Prop H and R are repealed, because this is, this tells me how, how good or how, how much performance you're doing on the job here. And, you know, your Grand Avenue project's going to go down, all your CRA project is going to go down. Eventually, people are going to rise up to the occasion, because they're not going to take this. They're paying high prices for the price to have these fee waivers, and it's not right. Because you see the price of gas today, it's outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. Zuma Dogg, 34?
Yes, thank you. Special event fee waivers, and I was here yesterday, and I did say it would be disingenuous of me if I didn't note for the record that after two years of constant public comments, I have seen a major scale back over the past three meetings, and I just hope it's not an anomaly. And I hope I don't see things like $20,000 for the BET Music Awards, because I do think that's coming through. And although the BET Music Awards is my favorite of the music award shows, I don't think it's time for the city to be paying 20 grand, especially since sometimes the awards don't even get to finish. Also, things like, you know, walk runs, $20,000 for walk runs. I'll tell you what, you can walk and run for free, and this is no time to be spending $20,000 for it. So let's just make sure it stays a good thing, because spending dollars these days is like babies in a hospital being born. If you're a nurse in a hospital and you give birth to 100 babies and you only drop five of them on their head, well, that's unacceptable. So if you spend 100 bucks and you're wasting five of it, that's unacceptable. Massive budget problems coming, much worse. You guys are supposed to be belt tightening. I'm here to say, you know, you've got to go on some type of anorexia diet and belt tighten way much more. I'm sorry for that terrible example, but it's way worse, and I think all hell's about to break loose, because I don't think the city's going to be having the money to provide the pro, the services that is needed for a city to function. And I would like to say, since there was a lot of talking today and I had trouble speaking, I'd like to use some vocal inflections of my words, it's called singing, to say, "Please stop deceiving, constituents are leaving, represent the people."
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. If you can please, speak in a way that is less disruptive in the meeting, but thank you.
I'd like to say for the record, though, that words are words in First Amendment, and you're allowed to sing. Singing is protected under the First Amendment speech.
Thank you, sir.
And I got, what?
Mr. Alarcon said, who said that was singing?
Ah!
All right. And with that, public comment will close on that item. If you can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item is item 35, and that was called special for cards.
All right, we'll go back out to Van Nuys, Ms. Fogler. Item 35. I'm sorry, Ms. Perry?
Well, they're going to, you're continuing to dig the grave more, you know, for, for everybody here in the city, just like New York had a bankruptcy back in the 80s. But anyway, right here, convention center fee waiver folks, again happening for the citywide crusade against violence. And the, you know, the other ones I was talking about, it was the Dodger thing was getting waived, and the Filipino-American community, St. Augustine, all these things are costing us, folks, big time money. And these people just don't want to do anything about it, and, you know, they give favoritism to, to certain people, and this is, this is going to end up costing, costing a lot of people who have put money here, and we're going to have the same devastation of bankruptcy like the, like New York had in the, in the 1980s. So I'm sorry to say that, but AB 212 needs to pass, put some control over these, these people here at City Hall, because obviously they, they need to have that, and just like what they did with the cable. So just like this, this is the example I'm talking about, and you better hear that, Mr. City Attorney, because that goes for you also, for everybody here. Everybody sitting here is included.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. That'll close our public comment on that item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 37, call special for cards.
Okay, item 37 is now before us. Mr. Sacks, would you like to come forward?
I wanted to do 23 and 28 forthwith, please.
Okay, without objection.
Yes, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks, 20, 37? 37. Sunshine Canyon landfill, lo and behold. I'd just like to read something very quickly before I get into this. This is an article regarding state investigation, state investigators are staking out landfills and issuing tickets to violators. The State Department of Toxic Substance Control did some kind of investigation at Puente Hills for three days. The article states that up to 13,200 tons of trash are dumped every day at Puente Hills, enough to fill the Rose Bowl in less than 13 days. 13,200 tons. The County Board of Supervisors considered an item on our agenda regarding Sunshine Canyon landfill. They increased the volume from 6,600 tons a day, 36,000 tons per day, 36,000 tons per week, to 12,100 tons per day, 66,000 tons per week. When asked about the difference between what should be 72,600 and the 66,000 tons, it was, it was stated that the difference is that 6,600 tons is dirt that's spread over this landfill. 6,600 tons is exactly half of 13,200. So every three months, there's enough trash that is not charged for to fill the Rose Bowl. Now, the city is entering into an agreement with the county. Yet you have a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982. Is there any fiscal responsibility involved here where the county is not collecting fees on 6,600 tons of trash and the city is walking right down the aisle? What a wedding. Congratulations on your assistance. Then you have a, you had an ordinance consideration relative to amending the LA Municipal Code in connection with conducting illegal dumping investigations. If that's not an illegal dumping investigation, what is?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
Thank you for your time, your answers, and shut off the buzzer and your attention.
Mr. Sacks? Thank you. That is the public comment for this item. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We'll send that forthwith, and congratulations, Mr. Smith. Number eight, we still don't have answers for Mr. Sein, so we'll continue that till Friday, without objection. Item eight will continue till Friday. That leaves item number 24, Mr. Weiss. It asks us to hold that on the tables. Mr. Weiss, have that. In the meantime, why don't we, we only have 24 left. No more.
All right.
Ms. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have cards from the public on this as well.
How many cards do you have, Mr. President?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 cards.
Okay. Colleagues, this is an item relating to the creation of a new Business Improvement District in Century City. My office in particular, Lisa Lopez Trifaleti, has worked very hard to try to narrow all the differences between all the different property owners. It's my hope that we have narrowed each and every difference. If we haven't, then I'm sorry for that, but, but it's something that needs to go forward as Century City goes forward. Mr. President, I think it'd be best if you just called the cards now, and if there are additional comments.
Mr. Zuma Dogg, is he here still? I think he's left the room. Bob Nowak?
No.
Nowak, and then after Mr. Nowak will be Ursula Hyman.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you. Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Bob Nowak. I am the Vice President of JMB Realty located in Century City. JMB Realty has been in Century City almost 30 years, where we have a, a distinct and long-term investment in real estate. We strongly support the Property-Based Business Improvement District for Century City. For the past two years, a determined group of Century City property owners has pressed forward with the effort to establish this bid. We would not be standing before you today if we hadn't convinced nearly two-thirds of our fellow owners that a bid is not only desirable, but absolutely necessary to the continued success of our community in Century City. This bid that we're talking about today will enable us to enhance and sustain the remarkable investments currently being made in Century City, and it will also ensure that a dedicated funding source and efficient management system is in place to safeguard new improvements. We have worked very hard to accommodate the needs and desires of all of the stakeholders in our community, and the plan before you today has been amended several times to fairly allocate costs and services amongst those owners. We feel very strongly that it is a good, conservative plan, which will enable us to provide the services which Century City needs and will need in the future. We hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have also a letter from a, a different owner who was not able to come today.
Okay, if you'd like to submit that to the record, we'll have one of the sergeants-at-arms take that from you.
Okay.
We could have one of the sergeants-at-arms take that letter. I think I called on Ursula Hyman next, and then after that, Letty Bugarn.
Thank you, council members. My name is Ursula Hyman. I'm with Latham &amp; Watkins, and we represent the proponents today of the bid. We were asked to assist when about 14 months ago, certain property members on Century Park East protested the bid's formation. In the last 14 months, we've worked with the city attorney's office, the council office, the office of the city clerk, and the bid supporters, as well as the opponents, to change the bid. During that time, we have had a reallocation of costs to ensure that the, only the properties along the Avenue of the Stars will pay for the Avenue of the Stars maintenance costs. We've also created a multi-tier assessment schedule whereby properties along the Avenue of the Stars pay a higher assessment rate. In fact, many of the opponents today have assessments of around $2,000 a year, $3,400 a year, or $5,000 a year, as compared to $30,000, $40,000, and $50,000 along Avenue of the Stars. And most recently, we agreed this morning that we would allow, when we terminated the ALCOA agreement, our, the rights that the city has to impose an assessment should the bid ever terminate. The significant reduction of the total bid budget was done in order for the opponents to feel more comfortable about the level of services they're receiving. In fact, their actual assessments were reduced over 80% just since February. In return for these really modest payments, they're going to receive the same services as every other property owner in the standard zone, and you'll hear from other property owners today about how badly those services are needed. So we humbly suggest that you take a look at the entire bid package and realize that this is a service that the entire city of Century City needs. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Letty Bugarn is our next speaker. After that is Susan Bursk.
Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Letty Bugarn with Westfield, Century City. On behalf of Westfield, I'd like to express our support for the Century City bid. As a company, we recognize that areas like As a company, we recognize that areas like Century City have the potential to remain dynamic and exciting communities for years into the future, continuing to bring visitors, new residents, and new businesses. This is exactly the type of community that Westfield seeks to invest in because of the high-end quality and character. As a community stakeholder, we feel very strongly that we have a duty to serve our community and constantly give back. And the Century City bid allows us the opportunity to be a part of the long-term solutions. The P bid is our opportunity, is our chance to continually reinvest in a community that means so much to all of us. I would ask the council to vote in favor of the P bid and let us be a part of the Century City's bright future. I also have a letter from Teresa Souza from SunCal who cannot be here today. Thank you.
Make sure that gets submitted to, one of the sergeants-at-arms can grab that letter? Please, there's a letter we can take. Thank you, Susan Bursk.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Susan Bursk. I am president and CEO of the Century City Chamber of Commerce. Century City is and has been, since its inception over four decades ago, a very special and unique community. The pioneers of this community saw the potential of once undeveloped acres and the opportunity to create one of the most recognizable cityscapes in Southern California. More than just a business district, Century City is a self-contained metropolis, a superior destination for entertainment and dining and retail and movie theaters and hotels and medical facilities, all within walking distance of each other. It was built and created to be a city within a city, and I believe has exceeded with that vision. As there is a need and desire to retain Century City as a premium area, the Century City business community has come together to ensure that this very special community retains its heritage and its image by providing needed capital improvements and maintenance. The only means to retain this one-of-a-kind community for all of the people that work and reside in Century City is by the creation of a P bid. And the majority of business community has stepped forward to ensure that those improvements and maintenance issues are addressed. We ask that you approve the property, uh, business improvement district and keep Century City a vibrant, dynamic, prominent community for everyone in the city of Los Angeles to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Watkinson, the next speaker.
I'm Renee Watkinson with CB Richard Ellis. I'm here representing both Entertainment Center LLC and 100 Towers LLC. They have properties in both of the zones proposed for the P bid. And we vitally support and believe these are very important initiatives to move forward to maintain Century City on a go-forward basis. They're critical services to maintain the property values and go-forward basis. And we hope that you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. John Baurath is our next speaker. John Baurath? Not here? Okay. Gretchen Lewowski? Gretchen? She leave as well? Okay. Zumadog?
Thank you, the Business Improvement District, and this relates, there's a lot of these business improvement districts coming through, just like you see track maps, special event fees. When I start to see something increase profusely on the agendas, that's when Inspector General Zumadog comes to the alert. So basically, what this Business Improvement District is, the city doesn't have money to provide a lot of the basic services needed. So for things like street repairs, or maybe you want to put some flowers in the area, do some things to make it look nice, well, now they're going to be going to the business owners and asking for a 30%, 33%, whatever increase. You know, they're going to have the property owners pay a business improvement district fee 30% to, you know, help make beautify the process of the business improvement district. And I'm here to say that that's, you know, with, with people not even going to be able to patronizing these stores in the first place, no one's going to have any money to go to these business improvement districts, and they're not going to be making enough revenue, and you're not going to be going to track these guys. That is no time to be adding 30% on top. I don't know when this stops, people. When do people, when does the taxation stop in this city?
Thank you. Tony Conzenaria is our next speaker. As he comes forward, to point a clarification, this is not imposed by the city, there's a vote of businesses on this themselves. Mr. Conzenaria?
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. I'm here representing certain of the property owners that are on Century Park East in Century City. And we have submitted letters dated May 27th to the city attorney, city clerk, the mayor and council. Those are in your packets, but I will ask that they be put in again, just to be sure they're part of the record. I'm very happy to say that the property owners that I represent have gotten to the point where the process has worked, and we have to thank Jack Weiss for that, Lisa Triffalletti. We're 99% there. And I'll know more when I hear Councilman Weiss's motion. The problem we had, and it's instrumental, I was involved in some of the early P bids, and they really have a great place in our city, but sometimes you have property owners that are distinctly different. And the property owners on Century Park East really don't have a retail environment, they really have an environment that they control, they do their own security all the way to the sidewalk, they do their own maintenance. So there are some services that are duplicative of things that we will continue to do. But in the spirit of working with the council office, working with the rest of the owners in Century City, we will support the adoption of the bid based on what we are hoping will be put into the record as amendments to the plan that is actually in the packet before you. The only piece that's missing from that is we had requested that a supermajority vote be required, including the owners on Century Park East, for any amendments that are made to the amendments that were just made. Because they could seriously affect the equity of this plan as it relates to Century Park East. I would ask the councilmen to give us assurance that between now and the time that the council would confirm the ballot, may I have?
I have to ask you to conclude. We have to try to be as judicious and fair to everybody.
That he will work with us to make the reality of the meetings which have occurred this morning come true, in that when the bylaws are adopted, Century Park East will be protected so that amendments will not be made that would reverse the progress that we've made on this plan. And with that, I thank you very much for your lenience on the time.
Thank you, Mr. Conzenaria. Gordon Eng is our next speaker.
I wave my hand.
Okay. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that.
Good afternoon, Council. Arnold Sacks. As you know, I've come before this city council on numerous occasions regarding the language involved in the bids, the lettering that you use, the calling of the bids. This is a property-based business improvement district. There's a Chinatown business improvement district, there's a downtown business improvement district, but you, and you've had it numerous times on your agenda where you've requested the PBID, and you've heard a couple of the speakers mention it as a PBID. That's a property and business improvement district. This is not designated as a PBID. You heard the speaker prior to me be concerned about some amendments. If it's a bid or versus a property business improvement district, evidently there's some difference because you designate it language-wise. You have a specific language for density. You have a specific language for housing. You have this different specific language that when you want to use it, you use it. Is it a bid, is it a bid, or is it a property improvement, is it a property business improvement district? Please designate it as such so that the public, again, isn't led to believe one thing when it's something else entirely meant. Thank you for your time, your answers and your conversation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sacks, Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'll be very brief. I do appreciate the long hours of hard work put in by the owners and their representatives and the other stakeholders, such as the chamber, in creating this, this bid. We've done a lot of good work in Century City together over the past couple of years, and I'm looking forward to seeing the cranes start to go up in Century City on some of these other exciting projects that we have coming down the line. We're really remaking Century City. For those of you who haven't been there recently, you need to see the new 2000 Avenue of the Stars building, where Creative Artists Agency relocated from Beverly Hills, the new public park, craft restaurant, the new areas at the Westfield Mall, the new second floor. There's a whole bunch of great stuff happening in Century City and some more really exciting projects coming down the line. This bid will help those projects lift all the boats in Century City, whether they're on Century Park West, Avenue of the Stars, or Century Park East. Having said that, I recognize the special concerns of the folks on Century Park East. I recognize it as a different corridor. And Ms. Triffalletti and I have attempted to, to, you know, to reach every single middle ground that is possible. So what we've done with the bid that's before us today is we've reallocated the costs to ensure that only properties along Avenue of the Stars pay for maintenance along Avenue of the Stars. We've created a multi-tiered assessment rate schedule, and we've made reductions in the total budget to try to address the concerns of the folks on Century Park East. I just want to read one paragraph from the amending motion that I've made that has been circulated. It's paragraph 13, which states, "The city of Los Angeles will retain its right to pursue and levy assessments under the existing ALCOA agreements to maintain the plantings and maintenance of the median strip of Avenue of the Stars should their P bid expire, terminate, or fail to perform such work. Property owners along Avenue of the Stars will agree to waive their rights to protest under Prop 218." With respect to that paragraph, I want to add one further phrase. After the phrase, "maintenance of the median strip," maintenance of the median strip, add the following phrase, quote, "as described and referenced in the ALCOA agreements," unquote. Just to make crystal clear that that's what we're talking about, I'm going to submit that interlineation in writing to the clerk so that it is clear and part of the record. It doesn't alter anything that we had before, it just reaffirms and strengthens the clarity of, of what we're trying to do with that paragraph. Hopefully, that will accomplish what the Avenue, the Century Park East folks have been trying to accomplish. And I want to assure them that my office will continue to work with everybody, and we're all going to work cooperatively when it comes to the creation of the bylaws, which will really set forward how you're all going to govern yourselves. So that will be, that's my proposed amendment to the amendment. I do appreciate you all not just coming here today, but working as hard as you've done. I think that, that should satisfy everybody and reach as many middle grounds as we possibly can. So that's my motion, Madam President, and I'll provide an interlineation to the clerk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Labonge has pressed his button.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I support Mr. Weiss in this effort here, and the only thing that's missing is that paragraph that would call for the subway to get to Century City to improve the traffic, which everybody's nanos on.
You'll, for one second?
Yeah, yield your, I'll yield you.
What we've done in Century City, Mr. Labonge, is not part of this process directly, but part of the, but a separate and related process, is all the property owners in Century City, the folks that you see before you and some others who aren't here today, all at my request, sat around a table and funded a plan, an urban design plan for the new century. And that plan has already cited and located the subway stop in Century City. So Century City is ready to go. My hope is that what these folks are going to do with their bid, among other things, is create sort of a political groundswell, a, you know, the beginnings of the movement to bring this over there. So they're on it, Mr. Labonge.
Good, we're on it. I support you. Jack, where'd they get the name Century City?
What's that?
Where'd they get the name Century City?
Where'd we get the name Century City?
Yeah.
You know what?
Mr. Labonge, why don't you just tell me?
Let's you answer that question, Mr. Labonge.
20th Century Fox, it was the back of the line there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, no more speakers in the queue.
Thank you. Good work on the bid. All bids, good job. Let's give our city clerk a hand for that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any, anything we need to do before we take the vote?
No, the motion was in writing and the amendment was accepted as friendly.
All right, very good. Then would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
All right, thank you very much.
And Madam President, just for council's information, the ordinance goes over for one week on that.
All right, thank you very much. Our next item?
Council has motions for posting and referring for all.
Motions are posted and referred, and there's been a request to do 22 forthwith before we adjourn today? Without objection?
And that would clear the desk.
Okay, so there's no excuses on the desk. Members, are there any announcements? Are there any announcements? Mr. Labonge, are you announcing something? Would you like to announce something?
No.
All right, please just give us an announcement.
It's a beautiful day in L.A.
Thank you very much. All right. Any adjourning tributes? Mr. Alarcon will go first. Would you all please rise for adjourning tributes?
Yes, I would like. I would like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Pedro Avalos Sr. Pedro Avalos Sr. was a humble man. He was resident in the valley. In fact, he lived in, he lived in Tony Carthenett's district, and I would ask him to join. He was married for approximately 27 years and enjoyed spending time with his family, especially his grandchildren. Pedro worked for the Department of Recreation and Parks for a number of years at Sun Valley Park. He is the uncle of my wife, Laura, and we obviously want to send his wife, three children, eight grandchildren, our condolences and the respect of the city council, and thank him for his service to the city of Los Angeles. He passed away on Friday, May 23rd, as a result of liver cancer. Far too young. He was a good, good person and served the city well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. I think Mr. Labonge was next.
Thank you very much. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Earl H. Hagan, who migrated to Los Angeles at the age of six years old, attended Hollywood High and took music classes, served the United States Air Force in World War II, and developed the skill after the war of a great musician. You'll remember his music from every television show that all of us grew up in, including The Andy Griffith Show, Dick Van Dyke, and many others.